Happy New Year, Los Angeles, and welcome to the first meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for the year 2007. Today is Tuesday, January 9, 2007, and we are here for our regularly scheduled meetings. The Los Angeles City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340, on the third floor of City Hall. We will be meeting the first Friday of each month at Van Nuys City Hall, of course, and we invite members of the public to join us there. And whenever we have meetings here, you're welcome to join us and to, of course, give testimony for items that have been agendized for a public hearing or for our general public comment period. We are broadcast live on Channel 35, LA City View, on the city's cable system, and rebroadcast in the evening. We welcome our viewers from Channel 35. We are also available to be watched through our city's homepage on the Internet at www.lacity.org. And if you click on the links, you can watch a live webcast video of the council meetings. Lastly, you can call in, if you're near a phone, and listen to the audio portion of the Los Angeles City Council meetings and our committee meetings by calling a council phone at (213) 621-CITY. There's also important information on the city's homepage at lacity.org, information about your elected officials. The agendas for our council meetings are available there, posted 72 hours in advance. And we also have available information for city services and other things to improve the quality of your life here in Los Angeles. Ten members are required to constitute a quorum and begin our meeting. That's two-thirds of our usual full complement of 15 members, that we only have 14 right now because of a vacancy in Council District 7. So I want to thank the council members who are here on time, pursuing to council rules. Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Gruel, Councilmember Labange, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Wesson are all here on time. Councilmembers Smith and Zine are excused on city business today, so that would leave Councilmember Hahn, if you'll please join us; Councilmember Weezer, if you'll please join us; and Councilmember Weiss, if you'll please join us. As soon as we have one more member, we will have that quorum and we will begin the meeting. Thank you. This is the second quorum call. Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Weezer, Councilmember Weiss, we are waiting for one of you to come and join us. If you please come down as soon as possible. We have nine members and are ready to begin the meeting. Thank you. This is a final quorum call for Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Weezer, and Councilmember Weiss, if you please join us. We can begin the meeting. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Ms. Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Vine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a form, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weiss moves, Mr. Reyes seconds. If there's no objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Parks moves, and Mr. Labange seconds. If there's no objections, those will be approved as well.
And, Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there is a flag salute.
Okay. I can please ask everybody to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. And, Mr. Parks, if you would be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Everyone stand, face the flag, put your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, before beginning the regular agenda, there is a request to continue Items 27 and 28 for two weeks, and the new week would be January 23rd.
Okay. Is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing 27 and 28? If not, so ordered.
First item on the agenda, Mr. President, item number one is an item notice for public hearing. It's a street vacation in Council District 3, and if there are no protests, the recommendation for council action is to instruct the city engineer to proceed with a vacation.
Okay. We'll open and close that public hearing. I don't see any cards on that. And let's instruct the city engineer to do that. So, open the roll on that, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, item number two is also a public hearing item, and I believe there is a card on that.
Yes, there are cards. Let's call it special for cards for the public.
Items three through 11 are street lighting district ordinances, and I believe 12 council members will be present today. Do you wish to take those up at this time, or do you wish to hold those?
Let's hold the ordinances on the desk till we have 12 members. Next items, please.
Next item is item number 12, and the recommendation for council action is to open the hearing and continue the hearing and ordinance to January 30th.
Okay. If there's no objection on item 12, colleagues, we will open that and continue until the 30th of this month. So ordered. Next item, please.
Item 13 is a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District 5, and the recommendation for council action is to grant the application.
Does that require a motion?
Yes, it does.
Mr. Weiss, did you want to make the motion on item 13, the public convenience of necessity item in your district? Okay. Mr. Weiss moves, then. I'll second that. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay. That is approved. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, Items 14 through 45. Item 14 is an ordinance. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Please, let's hold 14.
And then I believe on item, excuse me, number 15, the recommendation is to receive and file.
Okay. We'll make that the recommendation. Ms. Perry, we'll move that. Specials, colleagues, for the other items, right now, 16 through 45. Specials, colleagues, if we can hold 30, we have an amending motion for that.
And also, the committee report has not been submitted as yet.
For 30?
For 30, yes. Committee met on that this morning.
Colleagues, any other specials? Mr. Parks?
Both reports.
45, okay. Mr. Parks moves to adopt both reports. Second that. Ms. Perry? Sorry? Oh, when 54 comes, we'll get that for you, no problem. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote on the balance.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, Items 46 through 55. Ten votes are required for consideration, and I believe cards are coming on some of these items, but I'm sorry, I don't know which items as yet.
Okay. Why don't we run through the specials? First, 54 was called special by Ms. Perry. Colleagues, are there other specials on 46 through 55? While we're looking at that, if there's no objection, let's send 22 and 23 forthwith, please, to the mayor. Any other specials, colleagues? Do we have any idea on the timing on those cards?
They should be on their way, Mr. President, but however, if council wishes, they could vote on them and then reconsider it. They're here.
Okay, here are the cards. Thank you. We will, 48, we have cards in the public, 51, 53, 55, we will add to the list, and 54 was already called special. And so, on the balance, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay. Those are approved. And let's go ahead. We'll come back to public comment in a moment, but I wanted to take item number two first, and then we'll come back to public comment just after that. So we have item two before us, and I'd like to invite members of the public on this item who filled out cards, starting with Jackie Goldberg on item number two. And Gail Corretts will be the next speaker after that. Two minutes. And welcome, Ms. Goldberg. It's great to have a alum back in chambers. Nice to have you here.
Thank you very much, and Happy New Year to you, Mr. President, and all of the others, council members and staff. I just come here, Mr. President, to congratulate all of the people who have worked so very hard to have a business improvement district for the eastern portion of Hollywood along Vermont, and then along Hollywood and Sunset Boulevards from Vermont West, and now completing the link that starts at La Brea and Hollywood Boulevard, and Sunset and La Brea, and going east. This was not an easy project, council members. We started it when I was on council, so it tells you how long ago that was. How long ago was that? That was, we started it more than six years ago, more than six years ago. And I had a long discussion with the folks in the chamber, the Hollywood Chamber, and I said, you know, of course, we're thrilled about the two bids in center of Hollywood, but please, please, whatever you do, don't forget about the eastern end. Because, you know, if you leave a part of an area unattended, it becomes a weight against progress for everyone, not to mention just in its own right. They deserve to have the kind of organizing. And I will tell you, the chamber took that very seriously. They spent, I believe, about 100 meetings in six years. Because in an area like that, eastern part of Hollywood, there's a lot of turnover. So you'd get a stakeholder to say, yeah, I'm with you, and then you'd find they weren't there anymore. And so, they had more than 100 meetings in terms of time and resources, and the efforts of people on staff of the Hollywood Chamber, probably $100,000 worth of time and effort and resources. And always, always, never giving up when there were setbacks. And then, of course, the legislature got involved and changed the rules on bids, and all this time, they continued to work. So I'm here both to thank you in advance for your support of this bid, and secondly, to thank the Hollywood Chamber for their incredible six-year effort.
Thank you, Ms. Goldberg. Pleased to have you here in our chambers. Like to acknowledge, Mr. -- we're going to go to the speakers first. Keep going, Gail. Do you want to say something about?
Yeah, I want to say something about Jackie Goldberg. Jackie, we're very happy that you're back in Los Angeles. You served us well, six years in Sacramento. You were a mentor to me when I was a candidate for this election that I'm sitting now in this seat, and you have a kitchen cabinet that you involve the community in your decision-making process. I like the way you work within the democracy and how you make it work, and thank you for coming down to the City Hall chambers today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Gail Corretts. Gail will be followed by Jeff Zarman, and followed by Laron Gubler.
Good morning. I'm Gail Corretts, and I'm the Government and Community Relations Manager for Kaiser Permanente's Los Angeles Medical Center, located along Sunset Boulevard near Vermont. I'm here today to voice our strong support in favor of the East Hollywood Business Improvement District. As a longstanding member of the Hollywood community, Kaiser Permanente believes that the major corridors of Vermont Avenue, Sunset Boulevard, and Hollywood Boulevard would benefit greatly from the proposed bid improvements and activities. As you know, these thoroughfares are widely traveled, not only by the Hollywood community, but also by hundreds of thousands of visitors each year. These roads not only provide access to Kaiser Permanente's Medical Center, but also access to Los Angeles City College, Children's Hospital, and hundreds of other local businesses serving the Hollywood community. The bid is a great opportunity to have businesses working together for a common goal, portraying our city, and specifically East Hollywood, in a positive light. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Gail. Jeff?
Good morning. I'm Jeff Zarman. I'm with Ramada Hollywood, and I really can't believe that I'm here. It's now been six long years, and we've, I've attended many meetings, and I'd like to thank the chamber, especially Laron and Todd at the Hollywood Chamber, for doing such a wonderful job. Just like to say that I am in favor of this, of this bid. Thank you.
Thank you. Laron?
Good morning, council members. I'm Laron Gubler, President and CEO of the Chamber. Again, just echo what's been said before. It has been a long process getting to this point. We never thought it would take six years, but we're here. It's a new beginning for East Hollywood, where there has never been a really cohesive business community. This is going to be the start of it. We thank Councilmember, former Councilmember Jackie Goldberg for her efforts, and our council president, Eric Garcetti, for his strong support to help us work through the issues. Like to acknowledge our staff, who worked on this, Todd Lindgren, Rochelle Sillsby, who are here. Thank them for their efforts, as well as people like Jeff Zarman and our strong hospital support to help get us to this point. We thank you for the efforts and the support of the city, the staff, in helping make it possible as well. So, thank you, and we're looking forward to counting the ballots.
Thank you. That closes public comment. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you to the Hollywood community and to Jackie Goldberg, who really showed the way with, I know you're going like that, Jackie, but you showed the way with business improvement districts and just what they could do, and building on that now with the Sunset and Vine bid, and now an East Hollywood bid. It doesn't say that government isn't going to do its responsibilities, because I know oftentimes, business owners are saying, well, why doesn't government keep us safe? Why doesn't government clean the streets? We do, and we will continue to. In some ways, it's almost like a matching program. We will continue to do as much as we can. But we know that government can't do everything, and where we can come together, just as citizens do around a community watch or neighborhood cleanup, where people take it upon themselves to do a little extra more because they want to see their neighborhood polished and looked even better. This is what the business community is doing in East Hollywood. It has been a long road on this one. But, colleagues, this isn't just like a regular bid that we do, and it's just businesses. We're actually participating in this bid as part of the city, because Barnes-Dahl Art Park is in there, the municipal art gallery, and we are going to be paying in as part of this. So we have a stake, not just because we do this as part of our duties as the city government, but we are supplementing the bid directly on behalf of the people of Los Angeles to make sure that we do our part as well. We have seen East Hollywood begin to enjoy some of the fruits that the western parts and central parts of Hollywood have seen in recent years. And certainly Kaiser Permanente's investment, Children's Hospitals investments. I was just over at Kaiser yesterday, and it's really, it's sparkling. You can see the new research buildings and the new buildings that are there. It really shows that we have everything in East Hollywood that Los Angeles needs. We've got a transit hub, we've got high-paying jobs, we've got a healthcare career ladders to help people from the community actually be working in those higher-paying jobs. We've got the best art gallery anywhere. We've got a Frank Lloyd Wright home. We've got businesses in Little Armenia that have small entrepreneurs that are adding to the lifeblood. And then up and down on Vermont, we still have our work to do, I think, hopefully to put those concrete lanes down, so we can stop having to put asphalt for all the potholes time after time again, now that we have the rapid buses going up and down, and the new housing that is coming up in East Hollywood. I think we'll be seeing really what is an ideal community as crime has continued to go down, as gang crime has continued to go down, and now as this bid will be, in some ways, the icing on top. So thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for believing in this and pushing. You know, they really, really were there. Laron never let this die, and would always pick up the phone and say, we need you again, we need you again, and the city of Los Angeles stepping up and doing its part. And lastly, I want to thank the city clerk's office, because this has been a bumpy ride. It's a complicated balloting procedure, and they stuck with us and redid it. And tomorrow, when we count up those ballots, I expect this fully to go through. And I want to thank Jackie Goldberg again for showing up, and thank you, colleagues, for your support, and Tom Labange for his support right in there as part of it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to stand and first thank Jackie Goldberg, and not only for this, but all of her hard work with our Taylor Yard Park, with the LA River, with our schools, living wage ordinance, on and on. Thank you, Jackie. I want to make that statement in public. I don't think we say it enough. But secondarily, this whole issue with the bid is a very important one. Just today in committee, we had a discussion in Councilmember Wesson's committee, HCD, where we're instructing the CLA, along with the city clerk, to look at how we can establish a state law right along with a current legislation that will allow us to get to 30% and create that flexibility, so that if 50% and 30% vote will allow us to move on a bid, we can move in that manner. We all know that in many of our districts, our commercial corridors, there's a high presence of absentee landlords, a high shift in tenants, especially in those areas. We have high-income families in hillsides, where the census tracts essentially fold in these commercial corridors. So it's a little skewed in terms of who is actually being represented and how we qualify for these funds. So another step we took is to look into the ability of having community development department with all its tools to leverage what a BID can do and create a more thorough and comprehensive approach in dealing with economic development. So all these are lessons learned from the hard work of Jackie and her days here in the council, and her hard advocacy work at the state. And I want to congratulate the chamber for their tenacity and not giving up, the community for keeping with that vision, and for both Councilmember Garcetti and Labange for their stewardship. So I think this is a good indicator of what we can continue to do throughout the city in those transition areas that require more support. So thank you much, and encourage an high vote.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much, and thank you, Madam President, and Mr. Garcetti. Thank you for your work here. Mr. Reyes, thank you for what you spoke of there, and on our off-time-- And on our off time, I drove through Taylor Yard, and I thought of you and saw the new sports field as they're coming along real great and all that. It's the investment that we make in the community, which the bid is all about here. And I hope they could save one or two of those big train sheds for an art gallery, possibly. But just to put that in my mind out to you is that Ms. Goldberg, I want to thank you because at a dinner that I went to, Mr. Garcetti in Hollywood, they thanked your efforts in supporting bids as a statement that you made, "Those who don't invest in their own neighborhood never see investment." And because of the bid in Hollywood, it led to the investment. And I know Mr. Allman did a wonderful speech that night, as well as Mr. Tronson did a wonderful speech about what bids are all about. And here, the leadership of the Chamber of Commerce working so hard, and I'm glad that it didn't get all the property around City College, but enough of it. Because I want to see the Chamber of Commerce focus on that community college as an important component of Los Angeles and Hollywood, and the benefit of that great institution that helped me when I went to school. And I know Bernard Parks went to City College as well. And I'm not sure any of us who were here. But these are important investments in community. So I thank Mr. Garcetti for his leadership. I got a small part of it. And Mr. Reyes, always for your leadership and what you're doing. Jackie Goldberg, for your leadership from the days in the school board to the assembly, and now to just being a good, great citizen of Los Angeles as opposed to an elected official of Los Angeles. And to Kaiser Permanente, and thank you for what you do. You're a very strong component in the community, a new redevelopment area. And I hope one day they could use your parking there to either shuttle into Griffith Park or also on weekends, use it for the Barnes-Dahl when you're not having the regular hospital hours. It's a great use there. Thank you all very much. Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonds. Seeing no other members on the queue, that item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll.
Madam President, actually, the roll doesn't need to be opened on this at this time. The ballot tabulation will be tomorrow.
Tomorrow's the official round.
This is just the public hearing that has been closed.
All right. The anticipation. So we close the public comment period today, and the vote will take place tomorrow. Thank you very much. Next item.
Madam President, there are 12 councilmembers present now. Do you wish to take up the ordinances at this time?
Please.
That would be Items 3 through 11, which are street lighting ordinances, and Item Number 14.
Are there any specials on those items, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
Those items have been approved. Next item.
Next item, Madam President. This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
These two? Public comment period, if I could ask, to Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, followed by Ted Newbauer, followed by Candido Mares. Ms. Hawkins?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. Again, this message is for all funeral home fakers, living off your inheritance before time of death. We must cancel all car and tax insurance, funeral home cars insurance, because these people have never paid any car tax insurance. No extra jobs for the funeral fakers. Since they are the funeral fakers, these are the illegal people that we are dealing with, whom have faked their funeral from state to state of the 50 states, before the public people. And attorneys of family fakers, with them to get all money at the wait before the funeral, to eat, drink, and kick it, to do more harm with the public people money for bombs and missiles in the 50 states. I will continue Parts 2 and 3 on a later date tomorrow. Again, as we continue to observe who is dying and who is faking a funeral and living large, let's remember that we are not just killing and bombing in USA, Hawkeye military, people that are alive, really, they are living, but they are yet dead, and the five different bodies. Thank you very much. My name is Sylvia Hawkins. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Newbauer, followed by Candido Mares.
Ted Newbauer, representing the Veteran's Center for Law and Justice. I was not aware that the commoners had to be pushed down to make room for VIPs. Public comment on general subjects is supposed to be before any issues are taken up. In any case, the media, my reason for appearance today, the media by means of KNX Radio has mentioned that there's going to be an introduction by the mayor's office, providing a cash bonus to people who sign up as LAPD recruits. We want to go on record as being against that. On the basis that radios for LAPD are still three years into obsolescence. And with our peace officers being shot by three-time deportees in the performance of their duties, they need to have up-to-date equipment when they need to call for help. Sooner or later, there's going to be an LAPD officer who is shot to death on duty by an illegal immigrant because they don't have the up-to-date equipment necessary to call for help. So please start taking a look at these things, okay?
Thank you. Candido Mares?
Good morning, Madam President, councilmembers. Happy New Year. I've got the newspaper in front of me again. Cartered away. $55,000 is going to be used for getting rid of carts, shopping carts in the Van Nuys area. I would just like to suggest, rather than taking the $55,000 and hiring somebody from the city, why don't we give it to a nonprofit? We give it to a nonprofit, now they can utilize it. And then, because nonprofits are working with those in the community that are less fortunate than we are, that nonprofit can now help a lot of the people in the area. To not have a law on the books which requires the grocery stores to have these carts retrieved is -- I can't believe that's even happening. And I believe that Councilman Greatsmith is right. We need to hold their feet to the fire. But Madam President, councilmembers, this is coming from street furniture. There's money there. There's money there. If we take the $55,000, use a nonprofit like Chrisless or the Volunteer Center, we're going to get more money for our bank for our buck. We can also then have that nonprofit charge the grocery stores and add to their funds so then we can utilize that for the community. Again, Councilman Carter, if I don't see you, I would just suggest that rather than giving it to city workers, not that we don't want to do that, it's just that let's utilize it through the community and better usage of that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Our next is Zuma Dogg, out in our Van Nuys office. Van Nuys City Hall?
Yes, thank you very much. Happy New Year, City Council. I'm going to try to be a lot more chill this year so we can get some productive things done, because there's a lot of things to discuss, and let's get right to it, y'all. First of all, it's already had public comment, but Item Number 41, it's very, very scary. And I got a citizen's alert, y'all, because we got a slippery slope, y'all. There ain't no snow on the mountains here, but it's a slippery slope. It says right here, "Adopt the proposed amendments to the rules of Los Angeles City Council." And they're going to be voting. See, back in the summertime, maybe you remember the Daily News article, "Free Speech Crackdown." Well, they didn't crack down enough, y'all. The police are complaining they're not, they can't do enough to get Zuma Dogg mapped out and Michael Hunt out of City Hall, y'all. So they had an elections committee meeting on December 14th. There were two councilmembers, a committee meeting of two people, and they paved the way to arrest people like Zuma Dogg much more easier, y'all. Now, you don't have to get warnings every day. The President Eric Garcetti or the pro tem doesn't have to issue the warning. The president doesn't have to, you know, say, "Please remove it." They're giving liberties to LAPD to use their own discretion to just arrest people left and right in City Hall. Then, it says right here, "The council by majority..."
Excuse me, Madam President. This item has already had a public hearing, and it is a matter that's on the agenda. So he should be talking about non-agenda items.
Thank you. Mr. Zuma Dogg, you need to talk about items that are not on the agenda that have been approved.
It hasn't been approved yet. It says right --
It has. No, it has been approved. So you need to talk about items that are not on the agenda.
Okay, well, let me talk about what's been approved. It's been approved. It's already been -- let me talk about the item that's been approved. I can talk about items that are not on the agenda for vote, right? Can I read my one sentence? "The council by majority vote may prohibit a person removed upon disruptive conduct for 30 days." The council by majority vote, they're the ones who decides what's disruptive, and that means if you're talking against their shady corrupt tactics, then they can vote by majority to remove you for 30 days. That's scary, but I see Noah Weiss is there.
Thank you, Mr. Zuma Dogg. Our next speaker here is Noah Weiss, followed by Oscar Johnson.
Okay, wild and captive audience. My name is Noah Weiss. First meeting in the new year. Happy New Year to everybody, especially you, Wendy. This year, what we're talking about, I think what we -- I want to try to come up with what I would call a positive, progressive, pragmatic alternative, specifically with regard to Ellis Act revisions. Talking to Bill Rosendahl's office. Hopefully, we can get some Ellis Act revisions. I drafted them. I presented them in my Assemblyman. If we can get something going on that, that would be great. Number two, in terms of housing policy, Mr. Garcetti, you've got that one Ellis Act revision in your office. We've got to bring it out. It's on that demolition one. There's no reason, if we want to send it back to committee, we can send it back to committee, but tabling it is not a viable alternative. I hear Jack Weiss now is even talking about tenants' rights, Bill of Rights. That's terrific. It means that basically we're making some progress, hopefully along those lines. In terms of 9 and 20 as an alternative, that is something now that the Planning Commission has approved, 9 and 17. It's going to be before the council, hopefully sooner than later. Again, I'm looking at Mr. Wesson in terms of his leadership on this. We're coming up with a land severance idea. Mr. Garcetti has expressed some interest in, which basically will enable the tenants to buy the improvements. We can sever the land from the improvements, basically, and move on there. Hopefully, the people who are watching are listening, because the people who are before me aren't. So just for the record. Basically, in addition, we have to basically, this council owes it to the Lincoln Place people to order the Planning Department to hold a nuisance abatement hearing to basically revoke their land use entitlements because of their violation of the no eviction promise. In addition, on education policy, we're now looking at a situation now where the mayor basically is overreached. The ego is way ahead of his imagination. It's out of balance. We've got to be in a situation where the council now can reassert its authority as a check and a balance in order to basically try to solve or help to solve the problems here for the kids that are basically being encountered. The mayor's situation -- oops, goodbye.
Thank you, Noah. I know that would be not your last word. Oscar Johnson, please.
My name is Oscar Johnson. And I'm a still a concerned citizen of Los Angeles, especially the District of Skid Row. And I think it is very neglected, and we have a very neglected police department that seem to be a sweatshop. And I always thought you have to have something like jury dishes from Washington DC Department Justice be a policeman to carry certain type of papers in your pocket, showing your identification. But that don't seem fair with the LAPD. It seems like they can put anybody they want to in a uniform and a badge and let them do what they want to do, expected against the homeless on Skid Row. It seems as though we need to make a more committed, positive effort to bring some kind of job training and some type of positive direction for the homeless on Skid Row instead of them to be so exploited and just throw it away. Thank you. My name is Oscar Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. That closes public comment period. Madam Clerk, next item.
Madam President, Item 30 would be next. However, the committee report hasn't been submitted yet, and I believe the council's holding it on a desk for an amending motion. So the next item then would be Item 48, called Special For Cards From the Public. And also, there is a substitute motion on 48B.
Thank you. We'll go out to our Valley City Hall. Zuma Dogg on Item Number 48.
Yes, my need clarification, thank you very much. Any clarification on 48B, because that's the first one I wanted to talk about. What does that mean, a substitute motion? Can you please clarify?
Yes, Madam Clerk, if you could. He's asking for what the substitute motion is, since he's out in the field. If you could read the substitute motion?
Please hold my time.
Yes.
The substitute motion has an estimated $10,000, and I move that the People's Choice be declared a special event. Further move the pursuant to ordinance number 1567 relating to the temporary street closures, that Royal Street Plaza between Jefferson and 32nd be closed between 8:00 AM on Monday through midnight Wednesday. 32nd Street between Hoover and FIG, and also local emergencies. And then the westbound Jefferson Boulevard between FIG and Hoover be closed between 2:00 and 7:00.
To save some time, is the fee still cost and absorbed by the city?
Yes.
Okay, then I can continue.
And if you just put him back on his time on two minutes. Go ahead, Mr. Zuma.
Thank you very much. Okay, special event fees. I'm not going to, I'm trying to calm down and be a lot more respectful. I'm not going to give the obligatory hell no, but I got to say it anyway, because this is the People's Choice Award. Let me tell the people about the special event fee waiver plan. If you're a nonprofit community organization that maybe wants to have some kind of festival or whatever in the community that's open to the public with no admission, but maybe you're not big enough to be able to pay for the street closures and the police and the trash collection, so city council's nice enough to put in a charity donation to pay for those costs. However, the People's Choice Awards, that's $10,000. That's going to be on TV, CBS. They're going to make millions and millions of dollars in ad revenue. So I don't see why the city's picking that up. That ain't no nonprofit organization. It ain't open to the public. But I see Parks and Wesson's name on there. So you know what? If you're going to approve this special event fee, Zuma Dogg wants his free tickets, y'all, because I want to go to the People's Choice Award. So make sure it's open to the public. If you're not going to give Zuma Dogg a free ticket, then you better vote no on this. I want to see some no votes on that, because we also got on the other one that's coming up today, $6,000 for the Screen Actors Guild Awards. You can't tell me with Tom Hanks, John Devault, to Tom Cruise, you add up their memberships right there, you could pay for special event fees for the rest of their lives. Why are we paying for the SAG Music Awards? Why are the waiters and waitresses who can't get a lot of acting jobs, why are we the ones that are going to be paying for the SAG Awards? $6,000. Then when the little old ladies want to have their fundraising festival out on the streets, they can't do it because the council members goes, "Oh, we already pissed all the money away for giving it to SAG and giving it to People's Choice Awards." And let's see what else is on here, y'all. So I like to say, Zuma Dogg, I do want to see some no votes, at least as a symbolic gesture. Get some no votes on here today. And we're going to be watching, because why are you milking the community with these special event fees for the People's Choice Award that's going to make millions in ad revenue, and the SAG Awards that's got more money than Eli Broden, Richard Reardon, together, y'all? I want to see some no votes. Did you vote yes, Zuma Dogg wants his free admission? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody wishing to be heard on this one from the council? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay. Next item, please.
Next item is 51, and that was called Special For Cards From the Public.
Mr. Zuma Dogg. And I think we can hear you more clearly if you're a little bit further away from the microphone, Mr. Dogg.
Okay, thank you.
Just otherwise, it distorts a little bit. Item Number 51.
Yes. How's this? Sound good right here?
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Let's see. That's relative to transfers of funds for an additional -- oh, this is for community amenities in District CD, District 14. It's $50,000 in recycling funds for community amenities. And I see a lot of these come through. I was just wondering if you can clarify briefly what the amenities are, the additional funding for community amenities? Is that just general for whatever you feel like? Is that just general for whatever you feel like? Has it already been earmarked for something specific? If the community's going to be getting all that money, we'd love to hear about it, and we support that if it's for good things. Can you please say what it's for? I'd love that. Thank you.
Does that close your comments, sir?
Well, I'd like to know if the legislative analysis person could possibly say what that community amenities are. What are community amenities? Has it been earmarked for anything specific?
We'll make sure that you have the number out there, so you can contact and get those details, but we're.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. That closes the public comment on 51. Anybody wishing to be heard from council? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 53, call special for a card from the public.
Item 53. First speaker is Candido Morris.
Thank you, Mr. President. This has to deal with graffiti. As we know, graffiti is out of control. Mr. Weiss, I just want to say that your constituents are very lucky you're getting back Fortuna Ippoliti. We worked with her in the mayor's office, removing graffiti throughout the city of Los Angeles. And again, the graffiti situation is getting out of hand, and we've got to be a little tougher with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Zuma-Doggs. Item 53.
Yes, I'll be brief. I would like to say that regarding graffiti, now you look at Zuma-Doggs, y'all, everybody watching, I ain't no square, y'all, but I like to say if there's one thing that the gangsters could do out there, is just stop doing graffiti, because that don't put no money in your pockets, y'all. It ain't helping you get your hustle on, y'all. It ain't helping put food in your family. It ain't helping pay your rent. Okay? So, I'm not saying you can't be, you know, you got to make your money, y'all. You got to get your hustle on out there, y'all, but Zuma-Doggs would just like to plead to the people out there doing the graffiti. It ain't putting money in your pocket. It's unnecessary. It's like singing and dancing the Zuma-Doggs does. It's not necessary, y'all. You can still get your hustle on. You can still get your game on, but you know, out of respect for the community, if you could just do one thing in this new year, is don't do graffiti, y'all. It ain't putting money in your pocket. You feel me, though?
Thank you very much. Anybody wishing to be heard from council on this? If not, let's open the roll, Madam Clerk. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 54, call special for a card from the public, and Councilmember Perry called that special also.
Okay. Ms. Perry, did you want to take the public comments first? If that's okay with you, we'll ask Clementina Verjan, or Verhan, excuse me.
Good morning. My name is Clementina Verhan. I'm the Planning Manager for Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority. I want to first thank you for your support of the 2007 Greater Los Angeles Homeless Count and your resolution to declare January 22nd to the 27th as the 2007 Homeless Count Week. LASA would want to encourage the council members, city council, and city department employees to participate as volunteers in that street count scheduled for January 23rd, 24th, and 25th of this month. I have here with me brochures and service planning area maps of the schedule of the Homeless Count for your information. For more information on the Homeless Count and how to register online, we would like to have people visit our website, which is lasa.org, and that's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments today. Our next speaker on this is Zuma-Doggs on Van Nuys.
I'll wave my time to Councilmember Perry, since she'll be speaking. I'm sure she'll represent it fine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, President Garcetti. This is a very important step we've taken today, as this exercise will be used as an assessment tool to determine how well we are addressing homelessness in Los Angeles County. It will be used to determine which homeless programs we should fund, where they should be located, and how effective we are in addressing the largest homeless crisis in the country. It will give every council member a snapshot in time of where and how many homeless people are living in each one of our council district. The count requires volunteers, lots of volunteers. Interested individuals should go to the Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority website, and that is www.lasa.org, L-A-H-S-A dot org, to get information and register as a volunteer in this effort. This resolution is going to bring focus, even more focus, to the issue, and I'm sure that all of us will be supporting this today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Ms. Gruel, I'm sorry, is our next speaker.
Just wanted to add, and thank you, Ms. Perry, for your leadership on this, not only in the census count, in one of your previous lives, worked on that, but I know, I think Ms. Perry and Mr. Garcetti and myself, when we did this a few years ago, actually went out on the homeless count in my district, and it was very, I think, illustrative and informative. I walked with a gentleman who was homeless, was in a recovery program, and not only did we kind of walk through the neighborhoods and find where some of the homeless were, but it also was an opportunity for us to learn from some of the people who are homeless, who have been out there. And in many of these instances, they're able to hire some of the homeless to go out and do the count, because they do know where people may be sleeping in those areas. But I would encourage colleagues, if you could, spare the time to go out as well, to encourage your staff and others to participate, because it is a critical part of our ability to get funding on the federal level. And as someone who worked at HUD, those numbers mean something. They mean how many dollars will come for homeless services in the city. And unfortunately, we've become the homeless capital of the world. We want to make sure that we have the numbers to get the funding to help us solve that. So, I just want to challenge everyone to do that. It was an eye-opening experience for me as well to participate. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel, and thank you for being out there for that count. It is very important, and I know all Angelenos can help coordinate that as well, so please contact your city council member if you're interested in helping out with the homeless count. Anybody else wishing to be heard? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 55, call special for a card from the public.
Zuma-Doggs on item 55.
Yeah, all right, let's see what's fit, let's see what's real with it, though. All right, we got, this is a resolution for, it's an old Granada Hills interim control ordinance in District 12. Thank you so much, Greg Smith. Thank you so much. I'm flabbergasted, y'all, he put in an interim control ordinance in his district, y'all, because he's supposed to? Oh, I got to back up. I'm sorry. So, what I'd like to say is I hope that the city does approve this, I hope city council approves this interim control ordinance, because the problem is, in the region as a whole, what happens is there's been a lot of luxury condo development going up in the city. It's very high price, and what happens is the tenants who are renting, they get kicked out, and then they can't afford the million-dollar condos, so they're pushed out to the outskirts of town. They're pushed to the outskirts of town. Then when it comes time for the commute, because they're teachers, because they're police officers, because they're office workers, they keep the city running, they've got like a three-hour commute, and then that's less time they get to spend with their family, and then it's more traffic problems. That's the number-one problem we're facing as a region, according to SCAG, traffic. And so, that's why we need these interim control ordinances, because city councilman, the mayor, there's just been a condo conversion craze. It's just madness. There's so much money to be made, I guess, but there's really not the demand, and it's all going to cave in like a house of cards. Now, I know that nobody likes to look at these interim control ordinances, because the mayor's number-one agenda is to raise property values, according to Daily News. There was an article, as long as he's raising property values, he's going to be able to continue to do everything he wants to, but he's wiping away the socioeconomic fabric of the city. The city's been destroyed right now, and 10 years from now, we're really screwed. So, I say, I want to see a lot more of these interim control ordinances. Congratulations, Councilmember Smith, for putting this down. I want to see a lot more of them. Thank you, Herb Wesson, for finally taking, admitting that vacancy rates have been ignored, that the tenants' rights have been ignored. Thank you, the Planning Committee, for finally bringing to this attention, and it's going to be a great '07, because the little teeny-teeny-weeny piece of community that has not yet been steamrolled by the city council will be able to breathe, and hopefully will be able to cut back traffic by having.
Thank you, Mr. Zuma-Doggs. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item.
Next item, Madam President, is item number 30, and the committee report has been submitted and distributed, and there is also an amending motion that has been distributed to council.
Thank you, and I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much. I know we have one speaker card, just with everybody's indulgence, if I could open the public hearing to hear from Mr. McQuiston, and then I'll give my comments.
Thank you, Mr. McQuiston.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. You all have my statement, so I'm not going to repeat it. We are in need of parks. This particular park, though, is not in the right place and would be a sore problem for the district, because we'd eat up so much money on this survey and the park that we'd lose out and we could not get proper development in the area. We need some surveys. We just don't want a survey that's directed in the wrong direction, and that's the reason that I'm mentioning this. If the survey were wider open, I'd certainly support it.
Thank you, Mr. McQuiston. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, and I know that we have CRA staff that's here. I mean, if you want to come forward from the CRA, why don't you come forward. Colleagues, you may have heard something about this, but we've come to a place in Los Angeles where, for better or for worse, it's actually, we think, cheaper to look at putting a cap over the Hollywood freeway to build a park than buying land in the middle of Hollywood. And the community, first in East Hollywood, and then embraced by the central Hollywood community, noticed that the Hollywood freeway is below grade for a significant portion of its run, and looked at the idea of reunifying both halves of Hollywood that's split by the 101 freeway, and in one of the park-porest areas of Los Angeles, having a Central Park right there. And there's other parts of the city, and over the 10 freeways below grade, 105, which isn't necessarily the city of L.A., but other places, and downtown, I know this was looked at a while back to unify the Pueblo with Civic Center, where we could look at this. We always wondered where the money would come from. Now, with the passage of the state bonds, there may be opportunity, but at the very least, we want to get our ducks in order to have a relatively inexpensive study, but I'm sympathetic to what Mr. McQuiston said, and really don't want to turn this into a central versus east Hollywood debate, because I think that there is room for everybody here, which is why we have this amending motion, 30A, which looks at expanding the study area to Santa Monica Boulevard. The worry of central Hollywood community and some of the work that CRA has put in would be that that would be too big because of the cost factor. Don't worry about the cost factor. We'll look at that. It's a relatively inexpensive amount when you look at that, but I think there are parallels throughout the eastern sections and the central Hollywood sections that will be covered by any study, as the chamber has pointed out, and we appreciate that, but this will also allow us to look at any of the places we want to put that, though we do have some momentum with this initial plan, too, that was put forward by the chamber and worked on by the CRA. So, if the CRA would just kind of quickly run through what the study would do and what the proposal for the park is, and I know the CRA has an interest also in the east part of Hollywood, so our ability with this amending motion to make sure that it covers all of our bases there.
Good morning. My name is Myra Rivera, Community Redevelopment Agency for the Hollywood Project area. I am working on doing the request for proposals for the feasibility study to select a consultant and also working with the Hollywood Chamber. The first phase of this particular study, and with the selected consultant, will develop different park concepts as to what is feasible, three different design park concepts. Also, the consultant will analyze the cost effect of whether or not, how much it's going to cost for design, how much construction is going to cost, and looking at the overall boundaries of the area, how the traffic is going to be affected, and the air quality, and what else is available for the community in that area that will improve the quality of life for the Hollywood area and also East Hollywood. On behalf of the agency, we're also going to be looking at different areas, working with the consultant, and we are going to be funding that particular generic, so that the consultant can also look at pocket parks or outside Hollywood area, East Hollywood, to see what's feasible for the quality of life of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for stepping up and helping out with that, too, and we will look at making sure that that includes all folks. I want to thank Ed Hunt, who was the first person who brought this idea to me when I was campaigning, Don Scott from the chamber, who's done a great job, too, really making sure that teeth were set into a plan and moving forward with something that would be feasible and something that would continue to have momentum, especially with the state infrastructure bonds going. And I want to thank Tom Labange, who put forward some money to help this out, and I know that it would, half of it, especially at the central part, would really unify his district and my district, and we say it often, it's almost become a cliche, we say it so often, that despite having a border between the two of us, it doesn't feel like it. Well, this would actually put that in concrete and steel. And it's time to think big, colleagues. This is a year in which I think we're settling in as a council. We have the ability to stay here a little bit longer, and we have the ability to think big about things in Los Angeles. Certainly, this is a generational issue in Hollywood, and the idea of having a central park right there in the middle of Hollywood that would take advantage of the geography we already have and unify a community that needs open space, gathering space for families and events, this could be something we look back on decades from now and say that we are glad to be a part of it. So, I ask for your support, and I thank Mr. Labange for his great partnership in this, the chamber and the east Hollywood community as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Mr. Garcetti, I thank you, and glad you mentioned Ed Hunt and the others who have been involved on, all of you there, the chamber on that. The one issue I want to make sure we do when we study this is look at the Western Avenue on and off ramps there. Some of those are 1950-style off ramps, and I don't want to, I'm all for this park, but we have to make the safety corrections for the roadway, and we just had a meeting with state officials on US 101 to see what could be done. So, there's a balance here, but I think this is the greatest opportunity. You can, you're making land. That's the one thing that usually you can do. In the city of Reno recently, although I didn't go to the League of Cities, some of you did, I know you saw the work they do with their rails, where they buried their rails and created public space. This could be done, as Mr. Garcetti said, in San Diego as well, could be done, so to look at that. But let's make sure we, as we go out of the box, you check with 100 North or South Main and go by Caltrans and show them, because they will need to correct the western on-ramp and off-ramp, and Hollywood's pretty good. Sunset needs a little work, but you got the message. This is a great day, and I think Ed Hunt there, who came from Texas, who came up with this idea, and I know others have supported it since then, so long ago, it's good to see happen to begin with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Seeing no other speakers on the queue, Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item.
Next item, Madam President. Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those will be posted and referred?
Their excuses on the desk. Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused Friday, January 12th and January 19th, and also Wednesday, February 28th for city business. A motion is required on the 12th and the 19th.
Mr. Parks moves. Ms. Hahn seconds.
Councilmember Gruel requests to be excused Friday, January 19th to arrive at 11:00, Wednesday, January 10th to leave at 11:15, and, excuse me, Tuesday, January 16th to leave at 12:45. Those all meet city, those are all for city business, and they meet council policy.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, I request to be excused Friday, January 12th for city business. That meets council policy, and also Friday, February 9th for city business. That meets council policy.
She'll be excused.
Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused to leave at 11:30 from the following meetings, January 26th, March 30th, May 25th, July 27th, September 28th, and November 16th and 30th for city business. Those all meet council policy.
She's planning well ahead. She'll be excused.
Councilmember Rose now requests to be excused Wednesday, January 24th for city business to leave at 11:45. That meets council policy.
Be excused.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused Friday, January 19th for city business. That meets council policy.
She'll be excused.
Councilmember Labange requests to be excused February 13th, 14th, and 16th for city business, and that's jury duty, and that meets council policy.
She'll be excused.
Councilmember Parks requests to be excused January 16th to leave at 11:30, January and January 23rd for the entire meeting. A motion is required, or those meet council policy.
All right. He'll be excused as well.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have announcements, colleagues? And before we do announcements, thank you, Mr. City Attorney, we'd like to have item 14 go forthwith. Announcements, yes, Mr. Labange.
Good morning, everyone. 150 years ago, the San Andreas popped, and this morning, Lucy Jones got us all together for a little press conference, and to discuss the very interesting term called "shift happens", and there's gonna be a shift in the San Andreas Fault, and I know Ms. Han is promoting better education, I know our Department of Emergency Preparedness, I join with you, Ms. Han, on that excellent concept and idea, but I wanted to give greetings from Lucy Jones, a great member of the United States Geological Survey Team, for the awareness of earthquakes, and also, on this date, in 1971, there was a tremendous earthquake at 601 in Silmar, that many of us remember. So earthquake preparedness is so important, the first Friday of every month, we should really focus on preparedness, because it will come again. Shift happens.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Any other announcements? Announcements, Mr. Parks.
26 and 44 forthwith.
Okay, 26 and 44 forthwith. Mr. Parks.
Also 14 forthwith.
We did, we got that, 14 forthwith. Any announcements?
I'd like to announce that the Black College Expo is in Los Angeles to promote higher education. It will be opening up January 13th, between 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM, at the LA Convention Center's South Hall.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other announcements, I know we have adjourned motions, if we could ask everyone to please rise. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Nicholas Steinbacher, Army Specialist, who passed away December 10th. He was 22, and he died of injury suffered when an improvised explosive device was detonated near his armored vehicle in Baghdad. He was born and raised in La Crescenta, and is the son of a neighbor of my Deputy Chief of Staff, Ana Guerrero, and he was the 300th Californian to die in Iraq. I know that we passed the 3,000 march, 3,000 mark as well, over the holidays. Nick, who just celebrated his 22nd birthday on December 8th, two days before he died, graduated from Crescenta Valley High School in 2003, and entered the United States Army on December 24th, 2004, assigned to the 2nd Battalion, 5th Cavalry Regiment, 1st Brigade, 1st Cavalry Division, Fort Hood, Texas. He was deployed to Iraq just on October 29th of 2006, his death came less than two months, less than a month and a half after he arrived. He was extremely well-liked, and was very dedicated to his beliefs, a natural leader, had a strong bond with his company of soldiers, and he planned on joining the Special Operations Division, and then upon his return to the United States, starting a career in law enforcement. He survived by his parents, Carolyn and Paul Steinbacher, his brothers, Dan and Kirk, may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Ms. Han.
Thank you. All members on that one.
Thank you, all members.
Thank you, I know many of you saw this on the news over the weekend, but Mario Donello, USC football player, the place kicker, died on Saturday at the age of 21. He was from San Pedro, he was an all-around athlete when he played at San Pedro High School. He was Mr. Versatile for the football team, competing as the place kicker, running back, and an all-L.A. City Section linebacker. In soccer, he emerged as one of the top goalkeepers in the city, earning the All-Marine League honors his junior and senior years, while adding First Team All-City honors as a senior. My son, Mark, who's 22, remembers playing soccer with him when they were in elementary and middle school. Mario went on to USC in 2003, and joined the football team as a walk-on, and redshirted his first season. He was the backup kicker in 2004, before earning the starting kicking job and a scholarship in 2005, when he set NCAA records for extra points converted, 83, and attempts, 86. The loss of Mario is not just a loss for his family, it's a loss for USC, it's a loss for San Pedro, and a loss for everyone who has ever had the privilege of knowing him. Grew up in a close-knit community in San Pedro, he was surrounded by a lot of loving family members and friends, his fun-loving and upbeat personality has always had a positive impact on the community in which he lived. Every time he was asked at school how he was doing, he would say, "Living my dream." So it is very, very sad, he had his whole life ahead of him, his life was really shortened way too soon. His funeral services are scheduled for this Friday at 10:30 at Mary Star of the Sea Church in San Pedro, Mario will be certainly missed. I'd like us to also adjourn in memory of Joseph Michael Martisich Jr., who passed away January 4th, after suffering a fall and a head injury, and he is the father of a very good friend of mine, Stephanie Martisich. Joseph was a community leader and a businessman, he served as the president of the Franco-Italian Packing Company, a member of the Harbor Masonic Lodge, a past member of Rotary, formerly on the YMCA Board of Managers, and so much more. He was a veteran of World War II, prior to that, he was a football and tracks and field star at San Pedro High School. He is survived by his daughters, Stephanie, Deborah, son Joe, and their mother, Lee. I had just gotten to spend some great moments with him at a Christmas party that his family threw over the holidays, and we had a good time talking just about the whole history of San Pedro, and I was really grateful for those moments with him. His services are also scheduled for this Friday at 11:00 AM at McNerney's Mortuary in San Pedro, the visitation is on Thursday from 5 to 7 at McNerney's. And one more, I've talked a lot about her, but I didn't realize that she died tragically right around when we were recessing for the holidays, so I realized we had not adjourned in her memory, and I really want us to adjourn today in memory of Cheryl Green. She is the young African-American girl, 14-years-old, who was brutally gunned down, standing on the sidewalk close to her home at 3:00 in the afternoon on December 15th. It was a racially motivated murder, and really, it was such a tragedy for her and her family. She was in 8th grade, she'd graduated from 186th Street School in Torrance, and was currently attending Stephen Middlewhite School. She wanted to become a doctor, she wanted to deliver babies, she enjoyed writing poetry, reading, music, dancing. Everyone talks about what a fun, loving, positive, always-smiling young girl she was. She's survived by her very brave mother, Charlene, her stepfather, Alvin, her brother, David, her sisters, Doritah, Vanessa, and Elena, as well as her grandmothers, Rose and Marlene. Her death, I really believe, has become the tipping point in the Harbor Gateway, and I hope for, really, the whole city of Los Angeles. We have been working tirelessly in that community since her murder, we've been walking door-to-door, we're trying to finally get to the cause of the deep-seated hatred that exists in that neighborhood, and we're hoping to reach out to the young people. Her mother and I walked door-to-door on Saturday, reaching out to the young Latino mothers, and pleading for an opportunity for the kids in that neighborhood to begin playing together, to begin talking together, to be going on field trips together, and we hope that the next generation will grow up and replace this hatred and intolerance with love and understanding, and we're gonna do that in Cheryl's name. And it's been very heartwarming to me that her family has been pleading for peace, her family has begged for no retaliation for this very, very devastating murder, and they've showed me an incredible bravery and courage and vision that I can't imagine possible when you've laid your 14-year-old to rest. So I really wanted us to adjourn in her memory, and hopefully, all of us, in our own spheres of influence, will work towards one day really eradicating this kind of hatred, racial hatred and violence in our own neighborhoods.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Mr. Labange.
All members. Members, I, over the holiday on the 27th of December, Gerald Ford, President of the United States, passed, and I know the celebration of his life, to live to be 93, to have a great influence on this country, at a time of great crisis, as a young college student, when Watergate was happening, it was something of a scary thought, but Gerald Ford would assume the post of President, calm the waters that were very rugged at the time. I know in later years, his wife, Betty, they moved here to California, and I asked, and joined with my colleague, Mr. Rosendahl, and asked all of us to adjourn in his memory. Mr. Rosendahl, I know you could--
Comment, 1966, is before you were born, Eric. I spent some quality time with Gerald Ford, he was a member of the House of Representatives, and I was in charge of the Speaker Program at St. Vincent College, where I did my undergraduate work, and after his presentation, he and I went and had dinner at a place called the 19th Hole. It was connected to the golf course, where Arnold Palmer would do his golfing, so it was called the 19th Hole, and the two of us had a three-hour dinner, just hung out, and when it was over, as a kid, I was reflecting on him, and I said, "You know, he's an honest guy, he's a decent guy, he's an inclusionary kind of guy, he was absolutely warm and positive and friendly, and, you know, a Republican, right? Great guy, and he has left an indelible mark on all of us, may he rest in peace."
For John Farrar, who also was an all-American football player, Jerry Ford was an all-American football player, and the University of Michigan, which came out here for the Rose Bowl, and marched down Colorado Boulevard in that game, which they probably would like to have a different result, flew back on the red-eye and met him in Ann Arbor, and played Hail to the Victors, Gerald Ford was a victor in this country, and I ask we all adjourn in his memory, and thank you for joining me, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Parks.
Madam Chair, I have three adjourned motions, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Quincy Beaver, born in Texas, relocated to California in 1942, was in the U.S. Navy during World War II. He spent a 40-year career at Uniroil Tire Company, where he worked in the area of quality control. He was also worked with the United Rubber Workers Local 44 as a chief steward. He's been also a 40-year member of the California Democratic Council. In addition, he was the founding member of the Carson-Torrance NAACP. He spent most of his adult life volunteering countless hours promoting civil rights, volunteering for political candidates, and working for progressive issues, advocating for the American worker. His funeral services will be Monday, were Monday, January 8th, at Central Baptist Church in Carson. Also, Ivory Lee Latham was born 1923 in Centerville, Mississippi. She was one of 16 children, she attended the New Mount Pleasant School, a one-room, classroom schoolhouse in Centerville. After giving birth to her first child, she and her husband relocated in Los Angeles, where they were longtime members of the First Unity Missionary Baptist Church. In 1965, she was united with the faithful Central Baptist Church, under the leadership of Reverend W.L. Robinson. She serves at the church as a deaconess, a first aider, and also the mission department. She's a founding member of the Christian Willing Workers Fellowship Union. She worked her entire life as an LVN, primarily as at David Brothman Memorial Hospital for over 20 years, and she survived by her five children. The final one is for Mr. Zein, for, in behalf of Jerelyn Morgan, a city employee, started a career with the city, January 2004, with the Department of General Services, in the Mail Services Division as a vocational worker one. She's a regular assignment, including conducting mail services in city departments located in City Hall Cluster, processing outbound mailers, operating mail machinery, and also the general clerical duties. In June of 2006, she was promoted to the Mail Service Division as an office trainee, and that position, her assignment, expanded, including computer operation, assisting mail service, barcode automation program. She was a great employee, and always was very polite, and had a smile on her face at all times, she was deeply missed by all who knew her. Jerelyn Morgan Services were held in Arkansas.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Any other adjourned motions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you. Happy New Year.